All right, are we, are you live? We're live.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. It's, uh, welcome to the Select Board meeting, June twenty second, twenty twenty one. We are all here in the, uh, morning room. Uh, we are welcoming people to join us in person if you choose. Asking people to, um, if you're not vaccinated, to wear a mask, um, but otherwise, we do have chairs set up in here if you wanna come. That said, we will still welcome public input if there is any, um, if you would identify yourself and, um, your street name, just like you do at town meeting. And, uh, does anybody have a comment? Okay, I guess we've got, we've got people from the committees, I think. So, um, I'm gonna start off the board member comments. Um, I'm gonna invite my colleagues to, to offer any announcements they might have. I'll just start, um, reminder that the town building, um, actually has been open. People are working in their offices and, uh, you can always get help if you need it by calling the offices directly, don't forget. Um, but the building will be reopening on July sixth. Um, again, if you are not vaccinated, please continue to wear masks. And I think that is the, right, that's the norm that's gonna be in the building. Um, and also, um, the Community Preservation Committee is gonna be holding a public hearing on July twelfth. It's a little bit in advance, but, um, it's summer, so you might wanna get that on your calendar. It is, uh, information on the website. And we will be talking more in a bit, but we will be holding a special, uh, planning session on July sixth, um, down in the Whitney Room. On, it's a Tuesday night on an off week for us on our regular meetings. So, uh, the public is welcome to join us, but it will not be televised because there's no cameras down there. Other, um, Jim, you have an, at least announcement, I know?
Uh, thank you, ma'am chair. Yes, we, uh, I think the entire board extends its congratulations to, uh, Tom McPherson and Minna Man Airfield on General Aviation Appreciation Month in Massachusetts. Minna Man is holding an event this Friday. I don't think it's open to the full public, but, uh, several of us will be there. Where there'll be certain dignitaries from the Baker Administration, uh, lunch tours, and, uh, we're all looking forward to that, and we congratulate him and them.
Thank you. Anything? Tonight?
And I have nothing tonight.
Um, so first on our agenda is, uh, appointment of Morgan Hillman to the Board of Library Trustees. Denise, do you wanna give us the background on this, on the joint appointment?
Yes, please. Um, so the library trustees have had two resignations recently. Um, the first one was posted and the library trustees, um, solicited, we posted and solicited applicants. They had a number of them. They interviewed candidates and are putting forward, uh, Morgan Hillman. There is some confusion, or there was some confusion on behalf of the library trustees about a joint appointment. Mass General law, chapter forty-one, section eleven, and section three dash one F of our charter requires it to be, um, an appointment of the remaining members of the elected board plus this board. Um, they didn't understand that, so they are recommending that you appoint Morgan Hillman. I spoke to Marcy. She was going to be on, um, the new chair. And she said that, um, she will be asking the board to confirm their appointment because of the mix-up. Um, they will make sure that their next appointment comes before you as a true joint appointment. So, um, I would ask that you confirm their appointment based on, um, the fact that in the first thirty days of the resignation, the elected board is putting forward a name, and they have done so in accordance with that requirement.
Okay, and we don't have Morgan with us, is that right?
I don't see Marcy just, is the one who just texted me to say that the door was locked, so I don't know.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Was she down there when you went down?
Who?
Marcy.
So I saw Katie Fisher and somebody I didn't recognize.
So maybe they're coming up, yeah.
They're in the elevator, I think.
Okay, okay.
So should we just wait a minute? Um, I guess, does anybody have any questions around the joint appointment? I, no, no. We did have the letter from Morgan in our packet. Since she's not here, um, she, I, I wanted to just say thank you. She's only been in town for a year and a half, so I love that a new resident is willing to step forward. Um, she noted that she lives in the old Pilot Grove School Building, which, for those of us who have been watching that building, wondering who was in it and what's happening in it. She invited us to maybe come see it at some point, uh, because she knows it's a, it's a interesting, uh, history in that building. So, uh, yeah, I mean, she, it, it was, uh, sounds like a great addition to the library. And, um, I don't really wanna do anything until, if Marcy's in the buil- we're waiting for Marcy's in the building, um, so we'll just hold tight for a minute. And then, um, and we'll expect the next appointment at the next meeting, or?
Yes, they have another trustee meeting, I believe, on the, I forget the night. But they plan to have an appointment for you for their other vacancy at your next meeting.
Okay.
Um, so they're meeting between now and then.
Okay.
I guess our elevator's pretty slow.
This is the new elevator, isn't it?
It's not leaking air.
I just talked to her again.
Maybe it's not moving, no.
Oh, she said she's coming.
I hear it. Goodness.
Hi.
Evaded.
The door was locked, so you know, sorry.
Oh, right, 'cause we have to leave the door open now.
Yes, it was unlocked.
Did you lock some?
I probably didn't. I just, uh, my fault. Sorry, totally wasn't even thinking about that.
Sorry, can my twelve-year-old come in or no?
Of course, yeah. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
We just did a quick overview of, of the status of both this appointment and then our, the next one you will be bringing to us next meeting.
Yes.
Um, would you like to just speak to this, to Morgan's nomination?
Yes, and Morgan is actually here.
Oh, and this is Morgan.
Well, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll sit, you can talk.
Oh, you can sit. So at our meeting last week, we met Morgan and we, um, would like to endorse her as our person to put forth for the vacancy of Kathy O'Brien's, the remainder of her term. Um, I think you guys have all of her paperwork.
Yeah. I was just highlighting your letter because I didn't know if you were gonna be here, so.
No, I was telling them in the elevator that I was trying to get my dog to pee in the rain, which took him on her, and I expected it to. Um, but if anybody has any questions for you, I'm here, and if not, I do have to scoot at some point, and I can stay for a little bit for the meeting, but.
No. No?
Anybody has any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Nope. Does, I would just say, reiterate what I said, which is, is, I love that you've only lived in town a short time and you're already willing to volunteer. So, you're a great role model for more people that we hope will do this.
And so we won't have a vacancy for ever and ever and ever, that we're getting it filled right away, which is amazing. And there were so many wonderful candidates, so I appreciate the endorsement, and I'm looking forward to serving for the next few months and seeing what we can do.
Great.
Thanks for stepping forward.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
And I've always been curious about your house, so.
Yeah. Well, I mean, now that it's safe to come over, anybody is welcome.
Can I ask a question, ma'am chair?
Yes, of course.
Denise, I just wanna confirm, uh, that we have the space, according to our charter, to make this just as the Board of Selectmen without it being a joint appointment. I just wanna ensure that whatever action we take here is legal, and that way we aren't overstepping our charter where it does say that it's supposed to be a joint appointment. I just wanna make sure that we're within the bounds there.
You are. Um, it actually says, along with remaining members, I mean, Marcy could vote on behalf of the library trustee as a member present, um, but you are within your right to still act upon it. If, you're still the appointing authority.
Can I just add, I, I had the same concern, um, and in the past, we've had similar occasions when the other board didn't meet some procedural requirement, or didn't show up, or just the chair showed up, and we viewed it either as the few members who showed up, well, you know, they enter a joint meeting with us, or, uh, they abandoned the opportunity to make the joint appointment and we just listened to their recommendation. So I had the same concerns, but we've certainly done it in the past.
Um, so with that, would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that in a joint vote with the trustees of the Randall Library or on their recommendation, Morgan Hillman be appointed to fill, to fill the vacancy on the Randall Library Board of Trustees effective from now until the twenty, May twenty-two annual town election.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you, Morgan, again, and thank you, Marcy, for coming in and representing the library trustees.
You're welcome.
So the next thing, we have a whole lot of, of the annual appointments that are due on July first. They are broken into, um, sections of staff paid positions that are holding specific positions and then, um, volunteers. So we're gonna start with the paid positions, which are mostly staff people. And given the length of the list, I think what we'll do, um, the, the board has the list in front of us from the revised list that is on the, the, the motion packet. Um, we'll do it by the year appointments, the one-year, two-year, et cetera. And if you have any questions on any of the people in that category, just say something, and then otherwise, we'll, we'll do them as a block.
We make a motion as, as printed or as listed.
As a block. As listed, yes. Can we do that? We don't need to read all the names right there, okay. So, um, the first group is one-year appointments with terms ending June thirty twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. That's gonna be hard. This, again, is for the paid positions, starting with the Select Board and Town Administrator, Executive Assistant, and ending with, uh, per diem part-time dispatcher.
I have one question.
Yep.
Um, the emergency management officer, are we, so Joe's retiring.
Yes, but, um, similar to what we did with Craig, you should still appoint him because he's not retiring until the middle of August.
Got it, okay.
So then, when he, when he retires, his replacement will be appointed as Fire Chief and Emergency Management.
Okay. Perfect.
Could I just ask a question?
That's my question. Yep.
If it, if it changed from what's in the packet, could somebody highlight for me how it changed?
Um, so there were no changes other than the order.
Okay.
Just the order.
I will say there were a couple, um, well, in the packet, I don't think so, the first version of the motion. We just consolidated what was one-year, two-year, three-year, and then reorganized them on the motions. So, on the, um, volunteer board committee appointments, some of them have been removed and put under the employee category, like complete streets. It's a designation by department, so they're under the, um, first category, but otherwise, there were no changes.
Thank you.
So any other questions on the one-year appointments? Why don't, uh, why don't we do motions for each subsection, just to make it real clear?
Do you want me to do them? Do you wanna do them?
Let's go.
I'm not attached.
Okay. So I move to make the following appointments of individuals in paid positions subject to the term of one year, ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does that sound good?
Is that enough? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All unanimous, okay.
I'm sure you were caught.
Should I say as printed? I think that's not.
Maybe, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Um, so then, the two-year appointments with terms ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-three?
Can I just make a comment on the two years?
Sure.
So there was some confusion as to which police officers were up because they've been staggered, so this puts everyone on the same reappointment schedule to make it easier for the police department and for us.
That's right, awesome, okay. Um, so any questions on the police, the police officers list?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Actually, um, I, I do see that the chief of police is listed here. Obviously, that is a separate position with a separate termed contract. Does this, how does this interplay with that term contract, and are we overstepping that term contract when that does come up?
You're not, so actually, uh, contracts can be different terms than the actual appointments. It, we've always reappointed the police chief on July first. I don't know why, when the contract has been a different day, it doesn't supersede. The appointment doesn't overrule the contract date, so the contract is still what's in effect. This will just reiterate his sort of term. His appointment term.
Any other questions?
I can do it.
Uh, I move to make the following appointments of individuals in paid positions subject to the two-year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three as printed.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. And then the three-year appointments for June thirty, twenty-twenty-four, which I believe are just the complete streets, the staff people on that committee. Any questions about that? All right, ready for motion?
Yes, please.
All right, I move to make the following appointments of individuals in paid positions subject to the term of three-year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four as printed.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim, do you need to abstain?
Hmm?
Do you need to abstain? No.
She, there's no financial interest in any rule twenty-three B appointment or appearance of conflict.
You've got this covered.
I filed a thing years ago.
Okay, awesome, okay. All right, that's unanimous. So that's the paid positions. So I wanted to just comment that we are talking about, um, reviewing, revising the appointment schedule sometime in the, over the next year. But for now, um, we're dealing with, the, the volunteers are, um, in sort of two classes. There's the people who are, come forward saying they are interested in renewing their positions, and then there's, um, openings. So, uh, we will be voting on the people who have, who offered to renew their, their terms, um, tonight. And then, um, for the ones that are still have openings, uh, Denise is going to be, um, posting on the website with a little bit more description of those committees, so that you know what you would be asked to do. Um, and if people are interested, like, say, Monica, who's new to our town and still volunteering, um, you know, you, you two can volunteer and talk to those committees and, and learn more about them, and, um, and put in, uh, letter of interest. So, um, so we have, um, let's do the same thing with the one-year appointments. Uh, there's Recreation, Complete Streets, Fence Viewers, Hudson Light and Power, Monticusset Area Regional Transport, and Veteran Graves Committee.
Have a question.
Any questions? Yes.
What are the fence viewers? If someone could tell me, that would be great.
Quite frankly, I have no idea, but every town has them.
Every town, it's.
I don't know what they were originally for.
You actually were supposed to make sure that you, the fences were on the right person's property and not, you know, you, we were supposed to be the arbiters of if a fence broke or if it was replaced, we were to be, make sure that. It didn't always, wasn't always the Select Board. I think that's why we got it, 'cause no one does this anymore.
Oh, okay, all right.
Until recently, we used to be the cattle town.
Yes, right.
Until people took that too seriously. And when there was a cow loose on Maple Street, I got a call at home, I was a chair. To come and move the cow, 'cause the police wouldn't go near it. I had a fit. And that changed.
Thank you for that history lesson.
There you go. Who moved the cow?
That's right.
Police.
Yeah.
That used to happen a lot more often. It was Bud Whitney, was it not? It seems like it was, it was Bud Whitney's cows. It was in the newspaper practically every week they were getting out.
Yeah.
I never thought about you chasing after them, however.
They do get out a lot. The police had some story about how cars and cows don't mix well, but I, I said, it's not gonna fly.
Okay, well, on that note, um, any other questions about the one-year appointments? Oh, and I guess I should ask if any of the people in this one-year category are on the call and would like to, to, uh, comment on why they're interested in staying on the committee. Um, we did ask people to join us tonight, so I, I wanna give you an opportunity to speak up. I'm looking quickly to see if the names, if I recognize.
I think Arnie Epstein is ready to talk.
Arnie.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, I am, uh, interested in, uh, uh, maintaining that position as, uh, the Stowe Representative Board of Hudson Light and Power. I've had that position since, uh, two thousand thirteen. But, uh, the next, uh, few years, um, are gonna be very consequential for, uh, Hudson Light and Power and for Stowe. We are gonna be undergoing, uh, a number of, uh, uh, changes in terms of, uh, the way we, um, move around. Our cars are going to be more electrified, our homes are gonna be more electrified. That's gonna result in a significant increase in demand for electricity from Hudson Light and Power. Certainly over the next ten years, I'm estimating it could be as much as twenty-five percent. Um, we have already been discussing that with, with Hudson Light and Power, you know, whether they have the capacity to do that and how they can help us with that transition, so I'm very much looking forward to, you know, the changes that we'll be seeing in town, um, you know, in the next few years. So, um, thank you.
Well, I think we, we couldn't get much luckier than to have you as our representative, Arnie, you're someone who actually knows what you're talking about. 'Cause it'll help us understand, um, you know, give us, any, anytime you feel like there's things that the town should be talking more about, please pass it along.
You're here.
Any, any questions or comments for Arnie?
No.
Um, Bill Seiler, I see you're on the call as well. You are willing to, uh, renew on the rec commission?
I will, I would like to, uh, renew my one-year appointment.
Now, you have to fess up to what field it is behind you.
Uh, that was not, uh, agreed upon, in part, uh, I think part of the representation was a little bit.
Yeah, I knew that already, so. Well. But in spite of that, we're, we're happy to have you. Um, any, any thoughts on your part?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I took the position last year, um, still have yet to meet, I don't know, five colleagues in person. Uh, I think we plan on doing that for our next, uh, as-yet unscheduled meeting. Um, but, uh, it was a really obviously challenging year, uh, for everybody, and I think the Recreation Commission, uh, it raged out, um, kind of going on the fly with, with, um, all the regulations and, and COVID, um, and concerns that people had. Uh, so, uh, hopefully, uh, this coming year, uh, will be a little bit more back to normal and we can, um, kind of focus on, uh, maybe not as much maintaining, um, and, uh, more progress this year, um, for some of the, the, the things we're thinking about, actually, so, uh, so yeah, I would be delighted to, to go for another year, I believe.
Great, great, great. Any questions for Bill? There will be, uh, at least one opening on the rec. I know one of the people that we had, um, wasn't able to participate much this year, so, so there will be an opening if someone wants to join, so. Great, thank you, Bill. Um, am I missing anybody else? Let's see, I think that's everybody. Um, I just thank you to the Veterans Graves Committee. Memorial Day was, you did a remarkable job. It looked wonderful. And I guess, if no other comments, we'll take a motion for the first one-year appointments.
Okay, I move to make the following appointments of committee members, the positions having been duly posted and for which the applicants have applied for the category of one-year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two as printed.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Uh, so the two-year appointments are all from the Stowe Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, um, and I'm happy to say that there was more than one person getting back on here. So, um, uh, Mike Upchinsky is on the call, as is Quin, or, uh, I don't see Quince, Papadopoulos, you, and Laura Spear, who I know Laura couldn't make tonight. Um, I guess first, the board have any questions for the, for Mike? No. Mike, would you like to, to have, uh, your chance to say something about S-MOT? Or why you wanna stay on it?
Hi, folks. Um, well, um, I was really hoping that this last term was my final term. But given that we're in the midst of a couple of different projects, I think this would be, uh, an opportune time to step down as chair, or as a member, potentially for continuing my chair of the show. Um, but I, I really think that this is, we, we have a, a lot of people who are more int- we have more interest in housing, uh, policy than we've had in a long time, and I think this is, uh, an excellent time to look for, for the trust, to look for, if, uh, the, just, the Select Board, and, um, to kind of start planning for the next generation of housing policy.
Will you have, um, openings, Mike?
Pardon me?
Do you have openings? I mean, are there slots, um, unfilled at this point?
No, it was only five. We, you know, we, a couple of years ago, we went down from, we had a chronically two openings. So rather than try to find more people, we, we amended the bylaw to go from seven to five trustees, and now we have no openings, right?
Is there the opportunity for, um, associates on the trust, Mike?
Um, the, uh, we discussed this with, uh, the town clerk, and the, it's, it's not, it's neither in the statute nor in the bylaw. So her opinion was that it was not appropriate to have full associate members. But, um, I, I mean, I don't, I, we, we could probably go to the Attorney General, the AG's office and try to, try to find out if there's a, you know, if there's a definitive, uh, ruling on that or, uh, opinion on that, but.
But people can still come to your meetings if they're interested.
We invite and didn't, are quite, uh, we have people come to our, the S-MOT meetings.
Uh, any other comments, questions? I will take a motion.
I move to make the following appointments of committee members, the positions having been duly posted and for which the applicants have applied for the term of two years with the term ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
All right, great, thank you. Thanks, Mike. And the three-year appointments, we've got Agricultural Commission, Cemetery Trustees, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Open Space Committee, trustee of the Randall Relief Fund, Randall Town Fund, and the Town Farm Fund. So these are three-year terms. I guess, um, I, I just have a question, actually, for Kathy, since she's in the room. So, you're on this as a resident, not as a staff person? But don't you, actually, as the staff person oversee the Open Space Committee?
I don't oversee them.
It reports directly to the Town Administrator, the Open Space Committee, or to us?
Well, there are committee appointed on this one, so they.
So we're.
There are us.
Okay.
We answer to the Selectmen.
I, I just, I find it, I, I was surprised, and I meant to, I was actually meant to call you earlier. It feels, um, like, that it's sort of two, you're, you're overlapping jobs. That we should, you know, there's other people in town that could be on the Open Space Committee, and that your influence on open spaces is great. I mean, you're super knowledgeable. It's not like you're not qualified, but it feels like because you're a conservation agent, or, I was in the title wrong, conservation manager?
Conservation director.
Director, sorry. That it doesn't, I don't really understand why you're on the Open Space Committee, specifically.
Well, I'm on the Open Space Committee because it's something that I'm interested in doing. Um, when I very first came to Stowe, I actually applied to be on the committee as a way to get to know the town and my neighbors and to give something back to the town that was in my kind of professional skill set.
Sure.
And, um, served for a number of years, and then it was time to do some other things, so I resigned. Um, and then last year, we had three vacancies on the committee. Um, they were having trouble making a quorum. I often attended the meetings. I was interested in getting back on the committee. From my perspective, it's the Open Space Committee that does a lot of the planning and prioritizing about what the town should acquire.
Mm-hmm.
It's the Conservation Commission that actually manages it. Um, and so, um, we're involved in doing trail planning, trying to figure out how to extend the ML necklace, which really doesn't have anything to do with the CONCOM. We did some of the early kind of planning at the four golf courses in town. Um, and, um, I enjoy serving on the committee. I think that they're strategic and proactive and, um, and very professional. And, um, you know, I, I guess I would ask that I be reappointed. I, I do it as a volunteer. I don't get paid for that time.
Yeah.
Um, even if I left this position, it was my, my staff position. I would stay on the Open Space Committee, so.
No, that, yeah, that makes total sense. I mean, I, and I never questioned, I mean, totally, your skill set is perfect for this. I just, that helps me understand the, that it, there is a distinction, which I actually wasn't aware of, so thank you.
And I'm happy to talk to you about it.
No, that's, that's, that's all I need, you, ma'am chair? Yes, please. Yes, please.
Um, just like to make a comment on my opinion of of Kathy Sparrow on the Open Space Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in our recent, um, in the recent work with the, um, large golf course, Stowe Acres, I think that Kathy has been, um, a very important person in the team that has created that. And, um, although as as Conservation Director, she would have also been connected with process, I think that the Open Space Committee probably, um, in each conversation that a person can be a party to at a certain point in, um, early planning is super important.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I think, given Kathy's background and her affiliation with the other people that she worked with to bring things forward, this was a great example of of how, uh, longevity on a committee and and, uh, connection to more than one group is very, very useful and important.
Thanks.
I'd like to sort of tail off on what you said, because you said something very important to me, which is expertise. Um, you're an expert in in this work, and I want to use all of our town's experts in this type of work. And I really appreciate you stepping forward, and and I have similar questions about ensuring we're protecting what is your job versus what you're volunteering and making sure we have clear lines, so everyone knows when you're on the Open Space Committee, you're Kathy the resident, not Kathy the Conservation Director, and that they should ensure that, and I think that's protecting you, hopefully, as much as it is on having folks in town understand what role you're playing and when, and I think that can be completely handled, I think that's a logistical question that we could leave to our our very capable town administrator to ensure that you're, that when you're able to volunteer in town, it's clear, and when you're able to work as a Conservation Director and doing fabulous work there for us, like, we can do that as well and making sure that it's clear and and the fact that the Open Space Committee also is not one that has a pure mandate, but rather it is to help us make policy decisions, I think is also very helpful, uh, in ensuring that you're protected again from the Conservation Commission, which actually has the management duties and certain uh, mandates there, so, uh, I I'd like to thank you for for stepping in, especially when I know there was a quorum issue, you know, I I'd like to see more folks, uh, get involved. Um, I'd actually like to see more non-voting members get involved, so that way they can start to learn from you on that committee, so one day when you choose to re- retire, somebody's learned from you on that committee and can step in, and and that's what I'd like to see is, is how do we reach out to other folks in town, bring them in, get some of your expertise and knowledge transferred, so that way we can try to have, you know, proper boards with with a lot of folks and and good expertise. So I'd just like to say thank you for volunteering and and I definitely support you on the Open Space Committee.
Thank you, can I just add, we have three land conservation professionals on the committee, which is pretty amazing, we used to have four, so
Yeah, wow.
we're pretty proud of that, and, um, if you have a vacancy, and we've had one for a while, so we would welcome anybody who wants to serve.
Before we entirely leave that topic, may I just ask the town administrator, it's an interesting question, is there a problem with an employee who is also a resident serving on a town committee? Uh, in general, and is there a problem specifically with Kathy and her role as Conservation Director serving on the Open Space Committee?
No, I don't see a, um, any problem or conflict, I did ask Kathy, um, a few weeks ago more about the Open Space Committee as it relates to her job, because I really wasn't sure, same thing, I wasn't sure if she was on as conservation, um, so she went through sort of the past history. Um, we talked a little bit about the Open Space and Management Plan, but there's a separate committee that does that, so Open Space is really a recommendation committee, they advise on property in town, um, I don't see any issue with any employee, quite frankly, and that's what gives the power to this board to be the appointing authority, that if there was a conflict or there would be a concern. But I would encourage employees that want, that are interested in a particular topic to volunteer, I mean, I know they spend enough time here, but, um, still, it's great, they're they're experts in their field, I think we should utilize them as much as we can
Yeah.
um, in all aspects, I mean, Allison, our COA Director is the mark, um, representative, and
Yeah.
you know, we ask a lot of the employees, so for them to want to volunteer over and above that, I think is great, and I think we should, again, capitalize as much as we can on it.
Okay, thank you.
I would also, I'm I'm not going to repeat what everyone has done Kathy, but I really do appreciate, and I appreciate you um, making that distinction, because as somebody who's still sort of new to government and understanding the difference between different committees, that sort of clarifies everything, and I think, and I do agree, the more experts we can have on things, the better decisions that could be made, so, thank you very much.
You should come more often, Kathy.
And we do have, the other member of the Open Space Committee is actually on the call, Bob, um, I know you also are up for a renewal of your appointment, would you like to, uh, as as the, another of the, uh, Conservation Professionals on the committee? Invite you, especially, we have been hearing from you, thank you to both of you for the incredible work at Stowe Acres, but, um, and we will be hearing from you again, I'm sure, but um, particularly for this, please.
Uh, Ellen, thank you, um, I'll I'll be very, very brief, um, let me just say, I I think, uh, Kathy's been great to work with on conservation issues in in Stowe. Um, her expertise really values the, is is huge value to the community. Um, and, uh, I'm really enthusiastic about continuing with the Open Space Committee, uh, into the future. As as you know, Stowe is, uh, interestingly about one-third protected, one-third developed, and one-third yet to be decided. It's that last category that's also important, the future of that and how that turns out, we want it to be done right so that Stowe remains the community that we all love, so, happy to continue.
Thank you, Bob. Um, and then we have Louise Peacock, um, the keeper of town funds, it looks like, uh, Louise, I see you're on the call. Would you like to tell us a little about the the funds, the three funds that you, I know you've been on for some time? I think you're still muted.
Mute.
There we go, there you go.
There we go, there I am. Um, the history of the, I know the Relief Fund was set up when it was by, um, pretty much a totally a farming community, and nobody had insurance, health insurance, and if they had a major accident or illness, the Relief Fund would step in and help them. And it, I'm not sure about, um, whether the town fund was started that way, I know the Relief Fund was started that way, Dorothy Sonnetson's the historian on that.
Okay.
Um, I, they drew me in when I was still working, um, at the schools, as a school nurse, and, um, because I grew up in the town, I know a lot of people, I know a lot of the older families, um, and because of warm hearts, I'm also aware of where the need is. And so, uh, I really would like to stay on for the time being. I, um, I enjoy it.
That's terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louise, it you, uh, you really are an incredible resource for all of us to know, you you do have a a very, um, confidential but wide knowledge of what, where the need is in town, and that's really important, we're lucky to have you, uh, continue that role.
I think the biggest issue is that people believe that there are no needed people in Stowe, and that has been the biggest obstacle to getting help to people.
You're here.
And so, um, I just tell everybody, everybody has somebody that's in the town that needs help, and you gotta keep your eyes and ears open and reach out.
Absolutely. Thank you, Louise.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for for Louise?
Thank you, Louise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, any other comments on this group of appointments? Nope, alright, so I will take the motion.
Alright, I move to make the following appointments of committee members, the positions having been duly posted and for which the applicants have applied. Were the three year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, unanimous, thank you all. And then last but not least, the five year appointment for the Economic Development and Industrial Commission, Kevin Whalen, who I don't see on the call. Um, this is an opportunity to remind us what the EDIC is.
The one who was the rep, right?
Was, I'm not, I don't know who is.
Someone wants to, just, anybody want to explain the goal?
Hi, Tom.
I'm I'm actually, um,
Oh, I was like Dennis.
Jen Jerome here, uh, the member of the EDIC.
Oh, hi Jen. Great.
Um, if if is this appropriate?
Sure.
Please.
So, we, our our mission is to support still business and, um, we are becoming even more, uh, actively involved in some of the new businesses on one seventeen in particular, and trying to, um, work out some issues that some businesses are having currently.
That's great.
So, one of one of which, um, can I give an example, or is that?
Might want to leave names out, but.
Okay, one, yeah, one is having trouble getting a light put on the, near their driveway to enter into the parking lot safely, um, and also outdoor seating. Um, of which they have lots and lots of seats for people to sit in, uh, but are unable to get the approval from a budding neighbors.
Right, got it. So you have your work cut out for you.
It's been a joy.
Well, thank you.
Yes, that's what we're doing, but there's a car.
Alright, thank you, Jen, um, and, uh, does anybody have any comments, I mean, Kevin is the one, Kevin Whalen is the one who's up for reappointment?
So, I'll just add, Kevin is a business owner and a former owner of the Ace Hardware, which is now the Opashawn. Uh, so he has, and obviously a resident.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, you know, building on that conversation we just had now about expertise, uh, he would be a very good person to have on our EDIC.
Yep, I second that.
I'd really like to add that I think everybody on the, on the commission is perhaps a business owner, except maybe one at large member.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a really nice resource for other businesses, and it's, I think it's great to have
Yes.
an advocacy group of experts for maybe new businesses coming in, just to balance the conversation.
Excellent. Ready for a motion?
Ready for the motion.
Alright, I move to make the following appointment of Kevin Whalen to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission for a term ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we leave this, can I ask Jen, um?
Did you, did you vote aye?
I did, I did, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, just just checking, you know, okay, yes, please, ask Jen.
Are we, are we waiting for a response from Andrew about whether he wants to serve or not?
Um, according to Jesse, he does not wish to continue.
Okay.
So, we did hear back from Kevin, um, but Jesse did not believe that Andrew wanted to continue in the role.
Okay, very good, thank you.
If he changes his mind, they're actually meeting this week, the EDIC, so if he changes his mind, we could certainly put him on the next agenda, but, um, Jesse did not believe he would.
So it means there would be an opening.
Correct.
Good.
There may already be an opening, actually, we may have one vacancy, yeah, there already is an opening.
Okay, so that is, thank you all for, um, our appointments, for, there were some people who decided not to, uh, renew, and that's okay too, thank you to, um, Andrew Bass from the Conservation Commission, Nancy Arsenal, who's now on the planning board and was no longer eligible to be registrar of voters, um, Eric Sullivan from REC Commission, Sam Samantha Alteiri from Springfest, and Bruce Fletcher from ZBA, though I expect he's on other lists, so, we'll see Bruce around, but, so thank you all for volunteering, and again, um, watch the website for the up, the updated post of of openings that if you're interested in joining a committee. Okay, uh, now we move to the Cultural Council, um, application for, uh, live music performance June fifteenth at, and now, uh, at the new location of, um, Pine Bluffs.
Yes.
Um, do we have people from the Cultural Commission?
Yes, Mary is on.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you for bringing this forward, it's exciting to see. Um, can you, for for people who haven't read your description, can you describe it for us?
Thank you for your time and consideration. Sure, um, so thank you, Dan, for your time and consideration, uh, especially on the short notice. This is our first time ever planning or hosting such an event, so we definitely appreciate your collaboration and guidance. Um, we actually have a series of events that week that we've been coordinating, this is the final one for July fifteenth. Um, and it's due to be in the evening, from five to seven thirty, um, at the Pine Bluffs Reagulation Hall area. We are planning for ninety minutes of live performances with three small performance acts that can help celebrate our cultural and bring community together. In prior years, we hosted a art, um, a community art show at the community center and hosted a opening reception that had about forty people in attendance. We're anticipating a similar turnout for this event. Um, the three performances that we coordinated with is a dance performance by a troupe from On Your Toes, which is a local dance in Ontario. We also have Spencey Sprague, um, upright bass, and Michael Morrell on the mandolin, playing American Hallelujah. And then Paul Rodriguez on vocals and guitar, playing classic rock and traditional pop. We're hoping to have an introduction at the beginning of our event of just, you know, what our mission is, what we're doing, and welcoming people. Um, and then in between each set, a brief setup and take down, there shouldn't be that much setup or take down. Um, we have a PA system provided by one of our cultural members, and then the musicians who will be on instruments and me and Mike will be doing those themselves. Um, we're encouraging participants, if they want to bring a snack or a picnic, they can do so, but it is carry in, carry out, so we'll be encouraging everybody to leave the park better than they found it, um, per regulations, we'll also have cultural members including itself. Um, who will do any screaming and coming up at the end of the night.
That sounds awesome, and the time again is five to seven thirty?
Five to seven thirty.
That's great. Um, I guess I'll, I mean, I think it's, it sounds really exciting, and I've just been dying to hear live music again, so I'm really excited, and I think you will get more than forty people, particularly if it's a nice night. I I have no doubt, people bring picnics, it'll be a fun evening for people to come out and hear some live performances. Um, other people, questions for, um, for Mary? Yes, Jim?
Um, first of all, Mary, thank you for the application, which I thought seemed to touch all the bases that we need to be taught, touched, you you contacted the police, you're going to contact fire, highway. Um, Mary raised an interesting question about trash and about whether the town should provide trash barrels, which, if you're going to have fifty, potentially sixty people there, you gotta think about this kind of thing. You know, I'd like to, if it doesn't cost us anything, or if it doesn't cost us much and it can be reimbursed, I have questions for the town administrator. That I gave her heads up on, number one, um, can we do it without overtime, given the potential, you know, given the time of the event, um, can the highway workers do it during their straight shift? Do we have the physical barrels, or do we have to go out, borrow them or buy them? And number three, what do we do with what could be a significant amount of trash that we collect?
Um, so I did speak to Steve, uh, so, the first one, it could be done during regular time. Um, however, that could pose a potential problem the following day, because then the trash would be sitting out all night, waiting for the crew to come back in in the morning to then remove the barrels. Um, so they would certainly put them out during town time, but taking them back, they would, they would be left unattended. Um, we do not have barrels, so we would either have to procure some, or we would have to use some other type of structure. Um, they have old fifty-five gallon drums, but they don't have covers, they would be open, uh, they would be subjected to obviously rodents and things like that overnight. Um, I would, um, Mary mentioned carry in, carry out, I I do think that that's the method that we should support. Um, folks should be prepared to leave with their trash, um, because we also don't have the ability to, you know, the the highway would have to take the trash back to the highway yard, and then it would count towards the, obviously the cost of our dumpster to have it emptied, so.
Doesn't, um, uh, with REC being there for Pine Bluff for the recreation area, aren't there, there's been a dumpster, right, wasn't there a dumpster?
There are barrels on the beach.
There are barrels, um, I don't know how. There are barrels, um, I don't know how often they're emptied, to be honest, so.
I mean, I think that would.
I think it depends on how they're using them, so like if Camp Stowe is in session, then I think they were emptied far more often, but if there's not.
It seems to me like a great opportunity to try it this time and see what is left after carry out
Hmm.
and see how to go at it the next time.
Hmm.
And, you know, how much of an issue it is.
Well, I, I just, my experience with, uh, Run for the Woods, when we, um, it was run by Recreation nominally and we would just bag in all the trash and then someone basically brought their truck up and we loaded up all the dump, you know, and, and I actually don't know where the trash ended up, if it ended up at town, at the highway or people took it home, but, um, it seems like that's a reasonable thing to, to do this time and, and, you know, again, if you tell people, especially if you're not providing meals,
Right.
people bring their own picnic baskets, it's pretty easy to just take your own trash, so.
Pack your bag, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and it's not like there's gonna be a truck there that's providing food.
Right.
That, that you would need a barrel for, right?
Right.
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 It's just gonna, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
That's actually why I thought I'd get.
And we're not providing any, um, probably no vendors, there's no alcohol syrup, there's no, um,
Water bottle.
there's refreshment, there's nothing that we're providing in front of.
Right. Right.
Right, so it really should be.
I think carry in, carry out, makes sense.
Yeah, it seems like a reasonable carry in, carry out. Um, I, I will recognize you, Marcy, you have a thought?
Thank you, what about asking, um, Moreau, Moreau and Sons, you know, local ties or,
Yeah.
probably wanna stay away from waste management right now, but maybe, uh, Mr. Trash Man to, to donate the use of a dumpster for a one-time use opportunity. I mean, it seems like a community service project somebody might be interested in doing.
Yeah, that's a thought.
I agree with you.
Yeah?
I, I don't know that any company would donate a dumpster, um, I think it would be, is this the first opportunity? And then, you know, this town is gonna keep calling, and all my years, it's always been a charge of, you know, hundred, hundred fifty bucks to rent the dumpster and have it removed.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, they could certainly call and try, but, um, especially given the situation right now in town where the other trash haulers are now extremely busy, I don't know what their availability will be.
There is a local family that lives in Stowe, whose dad owns Moreau and Sons, so I feel like that's a pretty close tie.
Right.
So it might be useful, and I'm happy to reach out to that family and send the information over.
Right.
But, you should talk to Mary and let her go there, yes.
Yeah. Um. I think I would like to move forward on
Yeah.
carry in, carry out, I just, I, I would feel most comfortable because I think that puts the onus on, on participants
Yeah, yeah.
and I think that that's going to show, I, I think that that's only gonna make it a better thing, you know what I mean, um?
Right.
And if there's no food, there shouldn't be much trash.
There shouldn't be much trash, yeah, yeah.
To need a dumpster, yeah.
Right, exactly, yeah.
I agree, I agree.
I think once, once they start talking about food trucks and whatever else, then we need to deal with, like, actual that, but, um.
Right, then we, then we worry about it. Exactly.
I wanted to explore it, but I've become convinced that carry in, carry out for this one is probably the best way to go.
Yeah.
Zach?
I wanna transition a little bit away from the, the trash issue and more towards sort of a fundamental thing that's in front of us, which is, I have no standard to which to measure this application
Yeah.
Right.
because we don't have a policy that actually allows us to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So first I wanna say to you, Mary, this is an amazing application in light of you not having an application to submit. This was unbelievably detailed and thank you so much for going through that large process of doing everything that is right because we don't have that policy in place, I think, that as we should have in order to do this. So, I look at this and see forty people, the only issue that I have is that this is obviously an entertainment on public property and, and it's a Stowe group doing it, that weighs me in to say that I think regardless of what policy we may have, we're going to end up with a policy that's going to capture this type of event. But I'm very nervous that what we're doing here a little bit is doing sort of a case by case basis upfront without a policy and thank you for being that guinea pig, but I, it makes me really nervous when we start to look at this and say, what am I weighing this against? Am I looking at liabilities? Am I, like, I don't know what I'm supposed to be voting on here because we haven't set that policy. So for me, the big thing here is, one, I think you absolutely should have this event, it's the event we need to have thousands of times in this community, bringing people together, letting people meet their neighbors, a lot of new neighbors in town, I think it's wonderful. Um, but I'm not sure whether the right move here is that we actually have a no vote because I don't know what I'm voting on, we don't have a policy, we're sort of putting the cart before the horse here in doing it, or whether we wanna vote yes because we think it's going to be captured in our policy and we're making that policy decision here as a board and I'd like us, if we're going to make that a policy decision, that if you're having an event on public property and/or if we choose to decide that a public group like the Culture Council, which is under us, is doing it, that we make that commitment as part of our policy, so that way we are actually treating the Culture Council the way we would every other group moving forward.
Hmm.
I think we sort of owe that to ourselves to make sure that we're thinking about that policy and obviously we know this is gonna come up more and more as COVID restrictions are, are, are letting down. So I just wanted to raise that as like a critical issue here as we're navigating whether to vote yes or no and, and sort of make commitments to ourselves or have some consensus on what we think that is.
Well, I would say we have, I mean, the, the irony is that we had more detail for people who are outside of town applying to use, to do events. So, so the format sort of there is just ironic that, you know, when we have an internal group asking for the same thing, it wasn't clear that they needed to do it, so I'm pretty comfortable going ahead with it becau, partly because, I mean, there's nothing in, I can't think of anything else that I'd ask that's not already addressed that Mary and the team, um, already addressed in this, but I also think it is sort of, for me, going in the same direction as what we've done with outside groups and it's just we hadn't made that explicit, clear for, for internal groups, but Jim, did you have something?
I think maybe.
Oh.
I did, um, I just want to second, um, Zach's point about not having a model. I have put on events in this town as a volunteer and basically had to just use my own knowledge of what it took to put an event together, like who you needed to talk to and what you needed to do, and there wasn't any guidance. If there was like a clear, if there was a clear, uh, process to follow, I did, I was not aware of it at that time, so, I, I would greatly second that. I think that needs to go on the work plan, I think that's something we can happily push forward. But, um, having said that, I do feel strongly that we should move forward on this particular one, given the fact that they've checked every box that I would check, do, putting an event on as far as, um, making sure they contacted the, the appropriate, um, groups in town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's a great point and I wanna echo it by pointing out that not only do we not have standards on this issue, but when we were considering the appointments of, or reappointments of people who had no opposition and
Yeah.
they were the only candidates, I, I had no standards to judge when, if ever, should I vote no against these people.
Right.
Um, I was comfortable going forward on that in part because we had to, I have a similar feeling here. I will say that, and maybe this is a dodge, but sometimes when you're in the process of, of developing a policy, you have to make, take ad hoc actions that help you realize what you need to have in that policy. I'm gonna put, personally, I'm gonna put this under that heading, um, but I, I strongly agree with Mr. Burns's comment.
Yeah, great.
I just like to, um, I kind of agree with what each of you have said. Um, I am, I'm very happy to move forward with this because I think the application, again, is so well put together. My thought is that I feel as though we're, we're in a, in a transition where the town has been doing things by unspoken agreement.
Yes.
And we have decided to become transparent, to put policies in writing, to make everything clear and thereby navigable. And so, by definition, we're going to kind of be noodling around in uncharted waters sometimes. And I think it's great that we're doing this and I think it's, um, it, it's not always gonna be a tidy process.
Exactly, yeah, did he say?
Um, I just have some comments from the fire department. Um, so the fire department just wants to ensure that emergency access to both the beach and the area can be maintained. So please, Mary, make sure that the gate area is clear of vehicles and participants, as well as keeping the roadway in front of the pavilion clear of seated participants. Uh, that way, if there are any safety issues, the, uh, fire or ambulance or police could access it easily.
Alright, great.
Yeah.
Yes, you can do that.
Oh. Yeah.
I just wanted to follow up and, and say that I really appreciated all, all the comments and I, and I agree about moving forward. I, I want to make sure we're being conscious when we're making this policy because like what, what you said, uh, Mr. Selby is, I, I want to ensure that we're being fair to everybody and, and that we don't put the guinea pig in a, in a position where we've then sort of reversed course and said, no, it's gonna be fifty people and it was only forty, so now we're in this odd position of making them jump through these hoops and, and whatnot. So, and I, I really appreciate that and I look forward to sort of building this policy and, and helping, you know, folks do it hopefully easily, quickly and, and know who to reach out to, you know, I couldn't, I've told you all the people you reached out to, Mary, that I, I couldn't have figured that out myself, so, uh, that's fantastic.
We had a lot of support from Denise figuring out the right people, for sure.
Um, I also, you didn't mention, but you did have it in your proposal that this is the final of, of four days of events that you're gonna plan that week, so, um, I, I assume we'll, we'll see more about that in the paper, but, uh, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, you're having different, uh, more room, I guess those are all remote kind of classes and stuff, but, um, that's great.
Yes, I'm happy to, if there's time, I can touch on them very quickly for anyone who's listening there.
Yeah. Sure, please.
Um, so the first event that we're having is on Monday, July twelfth, at ten thirty A M, called Hidden Cultures with Briar, and it's in collaboration with the Randall Library. Um, it will include a read out loud discussion and craft making. Originally, this was going to be offered via Zoom, um, but because the library is now open, it will now be in person. On Tuesday, July thirteenth, we're still figuring out the final details, but this will be an online event and we're waiting to hear back from World Farmers Organization out of Lancaster and hoping that they can do an online demonstration, um, of a recipe that they make. Um, they're an interesting organization that helps new farmers to the area, especially new immigrants to the area farm. They offer a C S A and they also offer a community kitchen where they teach like how to cook with different foods that you may not be familiar with. On Wednesday, July fourteenth, at seven, this is online, so you think you know Stowe, and it'll be a trivia night sponsored with the Capo Program online, um, in collaboration with the Stowe Historical Society, featuring online trivia, we're passing two hundred thirty-five questions about local Stowe, um, historical trivia.
Great. This'll be a fun week, so, um, okay, so I think, um, unless there's any other comments or questions, I will take a motion to, what, you wanna go back to you on that?
Sure. I move to approve an event permit for Stowe Culture Fest, a live musi- musical performance to be presented at Pine Bluff Recreation Area on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one and sponsored by the Stowe Cultural Council.
Second.
Any discussion, more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you, Mary, look forward to it.
Thank you everyone, and if you ever see perspective of somebody going through the guinea pig process, it's more than helpful.
We're gonna send everybody to you.
Yeah, there you go.
Don't send everyone to me, but I'm just.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, so now we go back to, um, sort of the second part of our discussion we started last time about, um, both our liaison role, but also, um, particularly the board of, um, assignments that we actually are, um, we do have not committee assignments as opposed to liaisons that we need to, um, fill. I didn't wanna, you know, I didn't wanna presume who wanted to stay or not stay, so, um, the committees that we still are in front of you, Capital Planning, Lower Village Revitalization, uh, Stowe Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, the Town Hall Restoration Committee, Complete Streets, Troughtown, and Magic Select Board Representatives. Um, there are others, um, I'm still the alternate for M A P C. Um, Jesse is our primary, uh, representative of M A P C and I've discussed with, um, Denise that my term continues for two more years, but I think that within the next few months, we might talk to the planning board about having someone from them become the alternate. It would make much more sense for a planning member to be, uh, but we're not gonna address that tonight. The, um, Local A- Access Channel Advisory Committee, Jim, is in the first of, or finishing the first of a two-year term, uh, which will expire next year, which I will assume you will stay with that.
I, yeah, I have no expertise and it's a, a long on-ramp and I'm still on.
And you're still on.
Um, but, I will stay with it if no one else, I, I don't think anyone else really wants it, unless somebody else really wants it.
It was such a sales pitch that, um.
Trying to be frank, so.
So, um, and then, then we have the Community Preservation Committee, which is actually a liaison role, it's not a, not a seat. Um, so that one goes back to the liaison list. Um, and then the Library Building Committee, which has no term, but we, did we create the li- Library Building Committee?
Yes.
Yes, so for everybody else, all other members at states until the, does, the June thirtieth following the design being presented to town meeting, but on the select board appointee, it did not have a term. I would assume it follows the same logic. Um, and if I may comment, so we did find out the Lower Village Revitalization Committee is actually was appointed by the planning board.
Okay.
Yes.
That's correct.
Um, we had to do some research on that, um, so Megan is still in that role until August twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So.
As a resident?
I really don't know, we can't find information as to what the makeup is, but I got what the terms were, which was a start.
Okay, so I would like to stay on it, we don't need to appoint another select board member
Right.
and then we can do it, uh, uh, the appointment in August.
Right.
In August.
Right, well, it's, it'll be, would be the planning board that would make that, so.
And then I'll do it then. Okay, great, so I will let Jesse know because I just told him to, that I couldn't make a decision yet.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Um, so these committees, we, it would be good for us to, um, to fill, um, we don't have to do them tonight, but, um, I thought I would open it up if anybody can, yes, Katie.
Yes, Katie. I just have a general question.
Yes.
Is there actually a description, a charter or, uh, purpose that's an outline of, um, what the committees are for? So we can get people to volunteer so they know what they're stepping into?
Right, well, these committees, just, just to be clear, what we're talking about now was, uh, these are committees
So that's.
that select board members have to be on these committees, but, but that's, as I mentioned earlier.
What the planning board one, it was curiosity, is I.
Oh.
The Lower Village Revitalization?
No, that's because I was an associate member of the, a voting associate member of the planning board.
So there, yes and no, um, there's a very old list that's outdated that talks, that has a sentence or two for each committee and, um, what the makeup was originally. Um, I have asked Joyce in my office to start working on updating that because there are committees that, um, for instance, one of our committees, it might actually be Open Space, was originally appointed to indefinite terms and then at some point they went back and put a term limit on. The, the, the write-up that the town clerk has still says indefinite, so we started to go through, there are committees that don't exist, there are committees that are new, so we're, that's what we're trying to do as part of this sort of new recruitment, is get a little blurb about what each committee does so that people can then say, hey, I wanna be on it because there isn't enough information currently.
And theoretically, there's a town report, right?
If all committees submit a town report.
Okay.
Hmm.
Which some of the smaller ones, you know, don't.
Sorry, um, well, I'm on two of these.
You have been.
I have been on two of them, um, and I no longer would like to be on the Town Hall Restoration Committee, um, for a couple of reasons. One, I don't think we need two select board members to sit on that and Courtney and I were both on it this year and I know that you were in the capital planning role.
No, C B C role, yes.
Oh, C B C role, sorry. Um.
Right.
So I don't know, that is a conversation we can have, um, but I'm not going to throw my hat in the ring for it.
Right, right, so right now, I'd rather hear from people who want to be on the committee.
Um. Great.
Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm not assuming anything in terms of whoever was on those committees before, I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this is, Zach wasn't here before.
Got it.
You know.
Well, I would like to be on Troughtown.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not gonna get any opposition, not one.
A blunt, a blunt judgment.
I would, I'd be happy enough to continue on the Affordable Housing Trust, um, it sort of aligns with some of my, some of my professional interests and knowledge, um, and, um, similarly for the Town Hall Restoration Committee, but I, that may not really be actually through that. I kind of agree, I don't know if it's necessary to have, I don't know how to wo- work that because I think the Restoration Committee asks to have a select board member and so, we might have to sort that out later.
Right, yeah, right. Zach, do you have any thoughts? Or questions about the committees, I guess I should yell to Katie's point, or like.
Yeah, I, uh, um, you know, the, the only ones that I'm familiar with are, um, capital planning, just because of previously going finance and engaging with them, sort of seeing a little bit, but not to any level or depth, obviously, as Mr. Selby has with capital planning, um. And then the, the Lower Village Revitalization Committee, um, I know it's a planning board spot, if that's figured out, that would be of interest just because I think they do have some contract stuff, so I may find some overlap there with my background. Otherwise. Otherwise, I I'm I'm open minded uh to seeing what other other members would like and and happy to sort of step in. And learn a new committee and and assist where necessary.
So is the problem here, we we need to free up some spots for for Zach to have assignments like?
Um not necessar- I mean, I'm not sure, uh right now, I was I was been on Magic, um I've actually enjoyed it a lot. I think it's really valuable for someone to be on, I think it's it would be helpful to have someone new on it. So I, you know, it's, I guess I'm just asking if there's, this is an opportunity, if you were on multiple committees last year, we're not gonna have as many. I mean, right now, we don't have liaisons, so this is, this is the list, right?
Right.
Do you wanna say, for example, Jim, on Library Building Committee, do you wanna stay on capital planning, you know?
So I'd very much like to stay on capital planning, um I find that to be extremely useful. And the chemistry is very good of that, and I think we're pretty effective as as a team. Complete Streets, I would give that up, but I make a lot of sense on that one, so. Um Library Building Committee, frankly, I would like to kick the can at least a month, and I'll tell you why. I'm very betwixt and between on that one. Um I think we have to kick the can for at least a month because we are literally in the middle of vendor interviews. I scored the proposals, I was in interviews before this meeting, I have some tomorrow, we're gonna make the selection in July. I can't just bail in the middle of that.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, so.
But my feelings about that committee are, let's say, complicated. And uh if there there is a mission for a member of this board, on this committee. I might want to be the one to carry out that mission because I feel like I've been carrying the flag so far. On the other hand, maybe I've fought this fight enough.
Well, that was the one I'd probably be most interested in at this point, just because I really wanna see the library come to some conclusion, but um.
Well, let's, you know.
But but you're right, but at the very least, we should postpone, it's not the time to to change it right now, we'll we'll leave you um.
Yeah, and I'd like to have a conversation with you then about um some of the challenges on that committee.
Yeah, right. Um is anybody interested in the Magic? Um you know, that's the the sub region of M A P C for us, has a lot of select board representation, um regular participation at their meetings. Get to hear a lot about what the neighboring towns are working on, um it's how, I mean, it's partly how, you know, Jesse started coordinating the taxi service with with the um Supery and other towns. So um it really does feel like it's far more functional than M A P C, in my opinion, for for our needs, yeah.
I'm happy to step in.
Would you?
Yeah.
Agreed.
They do meet during the day, though, would that be an issue?
Oh, that's right.
Shouldn't be, but anyways.
Yeah, I mean, they don't, they they meet at most once a month on Tuesday mornings, is what they've been doing, um.
Thank you for raising that, Denise.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's, thank you. So we have um Town Hall and Complete Streets. And so Courtney, were you saying you do wanna continue with Town Hall?
I do, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
But so Courtney's on as the C P C rep, which I actually think might open up another question because you're not a true member of C P C. But as this. So they really should have another member of their board participate, and then you could participate as a select board member.
That's true.
As a select board member.
I was gonna say, cuz we suspended all our liaisons, so, right.
Uh.
We bought it, yeah.
Because they, yeah, cuz they are not, um they should have one of their voting members participate, if that's, if that was the most.
I think, I think the current, the the makeup at the time that I became that representative uh was unwilling. Or uninterested in in uh that position, so.
So so we will consider you the select board member to the.
Great.
Town hall, okay.
Thank you.
Great.
We keep up the good fight.
Drink, so so we'll we'll come back to Lower Village and and the library sometime during the summer, um.
You got it. I I have the same feelings about Lower Village as Jim has with library, I've been part of it since the beginning. I really wanna see it through selfishly, um because there are so many moving parts right now that I feel like. It would be nice to have that kind of institutional knowledge of all of that, but um certainly, I wouldn't wanna hold it up.
Right.
Yeah. With Treetown, I just, I don't know what's gonna happen, it's always a joy.
So. So and and Jim, you, did you say you felt like you could give up Cl- Complete Streets, or it felt like you should be the one on complete? Cuz that starts putting a lot on your plate.
Yeah, and if you're sending me the message that I that I have four of these things, I can't hold on all four, that's not an unreasonable message.
Well, if you really want, if you got nothing else to do.
Well. I mean, Complete Streets is about bike and pedestrian stuff.
Right.
And, you know, I bring a perspective to that, that I think it is um. Yeah, I get a certain amount of enjoyment uh uh out of that, I think the one I really have to think about is Library Building Committee. By the way, Megan, what you just said is a very kind spin on my on my feelings about library building, I'll I'll take it, I'll take it. But uh thank you for that.
All right, well, so we, at least for now, I mean, we've got, I I still, I think that that's too much for you, Jim, but I'm.
I am, and I hear you, and I am inclined to um to uh give it up. What you're, what I'm fighting against is, we happen to have had a fairly good meeting where I thought I saw glimmers of hope on something immediately before this meeting.
Ah.
And I'm starting to wonder if stuff I have been saying for months has actually landed. And I wouldn't wanna walk away at that particular time.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
And then the Community Preservation Liaison Role, I don't know if Courtney you wanna keep that, but that's.
Yes. So so there's still needs to be one, even though we said we weren't gonna have any liaisons.
I believe, I, well, I I don't know if that's required, but um I would say.
Was that a charter?
Cuz I I was under the impression that that's, if it's not a charter thing, that we're, that's what we're postponing, the a larger discussion about the value of liaisons. If if C P C requires us to have a liaison?
No, I think they're pretty clear that they they um the membership does not include a select board member.
Right, right, cuz it's, it was.
So, so the liaison is just part of our little liaison thing.
Right. So I'd rather wait, cuz I think, I mean, I, and actually, that that's a good um segue, unless there's any any other comments around a committee assignments, any questions?
So you're gonna vote on those, will then be a vote, will you reorganize those?
Oh, should we vote on them?
Does does Zach get enough or can he have?
Yeah, what what does Zach have?
So Zach is Magic, so I have Jim Capital Planning, uh Courtney with Smart, Courtney with Town Hall Restoration. Jim Complete Streets, Megan Treetown, and Magic Zach.
And Megan Lower Village, so.
Oh, but that's, I, it's, okay, right.
But that's, and leaving, right, leaving Lower Village and the library building.
Okay.
Zach, may I, for you, man, share?
Yes.
Do you want any of the ones I have? Did you, were you saying you wanted capital planning?
Of all of them that are listed, that I think I could step into, that would be the one. Uh mostly because of how far the Library Building Committee is, as you just suggested, and convinced me more of in your in your talk. And Complete Streets, I I just think you bring such an expertise to that committee that I think it's just valuable, like no matter what to have you on there. Uh a- as a vice listen, as we try to think about that in our town, I just can't imagine you shifting from from that committee at all. I'm happy to step in, and uh, you know, I I would, whether we need to make these appointments tonight, or whether we wanna maybe have a meeting. And and maybe have, you know, I'm happy to have a discussion with you, if you wanna talk about the three more, if if it is about sort of transitioning one of them. I'm I'm happy to have that that conversation with you.
Sure, I'll I'll just say that this involves you, Alan, if I were to give up capital planning, which would disappoint me, but I can see it, no, I can see it.
Yeah.
I mean, he needs something substantive, then I would, that would, I would be much more inclined to keep library building because I wouldn't. Complete Streets and and Lake Hack are just not at the same level of involvement or work. Uh I would need s- I would need something substantive to dig the ore into when I put it in the water. I could kinda go either way.
So why don't we um we vote on Smart, Town Hall, Treetown, Magic tonight? And we'll leave, we've got the two that are just sort of in flux anyway, and then we, that leaves capital planning and.
Complete Streets.
And Complete Streets.
Are there any Complete Street meetings scheduled?
Um Thursday, technically Thursday, I haven't seen an agenda, I think, you know, it's supposed to be.
Or or should we vote on Complete Streets, cuz cuz.
I mean, it sounds like I'm doing it.
You're doing it, yeah, okay, so let's let's do that, all right, so we're, so um. The motion will be for um uh Courtney to represent selectman on on Smart, on Town Hall Restoration Committee. Jim to represent select board on Complete Streets, Megan to represent select board on Treetown, Zach to represent select board on Magic. Right, that's that's my motion.
Sorry.
There you go, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, all right, so that'll bring us, we will, we will put um Capital Planning, Lower Village, I'm just gonna, all the ones that we're putting on hold. Library and I just, right, those are the three. Yes. To be discussed later, great, okay. And and my assumption is that we will, uh liaisons is and the sort of interface with um committees is is part of our retreat discussion. I will say that I I emailed, when I emailed the the group, the committees that I've been representing, I immediately got feedback, which was sort of nice. Cuz you never know, um and and basically, both of them, um and it was particularly the Council on Aging in particular, but also um the Cemetery Committee. Said it was a nice way to just have an interface, you know, and hearing informally about the select board and vice versa. So, which to me feeds to that larger issue, it's like, you're right, we need to figure out a better way to communicate, communicate as a full board with our committees, so. I appreciate the feedback, but I also, I think it just further supported the discussion we started to have, so. Okay, so that so that brings us to our our strategic planning session, as we're calling it right now. So so July sixth, we have scheduled a a an evening where we're only gonna have planning, we're not gonna have any of these other appointments. We're not gonna have approving minutes from nineteen ninety, you know, we're, you know, and um. And you know, the the big question is, well, how can we best use the time? Um and I, so I wanted to start the conversation tonight, just so we make sure that we're on the same page. And I guess the the first question is, you know, can we, we should talk about what is our goal for that evening? Like, what do we wanna have come out after two hours, or however long we decide we wanna meet? My my initial thought is that it's a work plan both for the select board for the next year, but also for the town administrator. That we never gave Denise goals this past year, but she made it through without us and got more done than we could have possibly come on up with. But but I, you know, so that was, that's sort of my my personal goal, that that's that's where, when I first thought about this, that that's what I'd like to to get done. And I think that's sort of our first conversation in in that, but uh I will open that up. First, just, you know, what do you hear is the goal for that night?
Yeah, I I do think we need a work plan for us, I do think we need that for Denise. I think a lot of the items that I had written down were like specific to that, so we don't need to get into any of that tonight.
Right. Well, I I wanna get into a little bit of that, but first, I wanted to make sure that, you know, sort of what's our overall goal, and then we can talk about some of the items, maybe what I wanna.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Sure.
For the fleshing out the, what the agenda would look like.
Yep.
I'm on the same page.
I am too, um I specifically think that some of these issues like the appointment process, the the role of the selectman and the T A. That's another meeting, I I hate to say it, but I think we're gonna, I I think I I see semi regular policy type meetings. But that one's more procedural, institutional. When you asked for our top three priorities, I I wrote down T A work plan, T A work plan, T A work plan, um because that's what we need.
Right.
And I revisited my list of topics for that work plan from last January, when last talked about it, and and then I have to redo it.
Uh huh.
So it's outmoded.
She's checked them all.
She actually has checked out some of them, and uh the assistant's uh.
Mm-hmm.
T A will check off a a big one, yeah, so, but it's, they're out, it's outmoded.
Yeah.
And Zach?
I I can, I'm completely on the same page with a a T A work plan, I think that is, we owe it to Denise. Uh and what I sort of put down was that we need it to, so we can help her with importance and urgency, with focus. And that provides a clear metric that we're gonna measure her against in this next year, now that we're not in a COVID year, where I think putting any metric in place would have just been ridiculous. Uh so frankly, I I, you know, think that the board made a decent decision to move forward and and sort of letting Denise just run the town as it needed to be run. Um and now I think that we can help her, because I think it helps Denise with resident complaints and resident comments and saying that the board's priorities are these. And this is what I'm being evaluated against, and I think that's really important, but what that also means is it's a push-pull. It's not only setting Denise's work plan, but it's setting our own. What's our work plan, we owe it to hold ourselves just as much accountable as we hold Denise accountable under the charter, under four dash one. So I wanna also engage in that conversation of how we're going to hold ourselves accountable for what we're going to push and how we can make. It's the iPhone.
Is it?
Oh, is it iPhone?
Um how we can make our own work plan.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry, I muted us by accident. Okay, go ahead.
How we can make our work plan actually symbiotic with Denise's, and and I think that's really important for us to find.
Right. Yeah.
Where we're gonna be in line and make sure we're driving together.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and with that, it's also us giving the other appointed boards direction and leadership, and where we want the town to be going strategically thinking. And I think we start to break into some other categories, but it all starts to me with Denise's work plan, and then how we build on ours from there, and then what we go. So that's, I'd like to see us work in that order, uh because I think we'll find some clarity working through Denise's that we can apply to ours, that we can continue to sort of steamroll as we hit other strategic priorities.
Yeah, cuz I, I mean, I would go on, pretty cool, something you said at the beginning, I, that we need to be more clear on, you know, so what is our job? You know, if being clear on what Denise's job is and needs us, it helps us figure out what what we really should be working on. So I think I think you're right, it's that's the right order of things. And I, and yeah, to what you were saying, Jim, I think, you know, one of the thoughts, I, of course, some meetings are easier to imagine than others. But to to actually block time of almost every meeting that we have some amount of policy work. Obviously, some, you know, you have a public hearing, or you have other things that, there's only so many hours we wanna be here. But I think, thinking about how we can use our our meetings differently also, that, you know. Cuz even if we break down, if we start listing, I mean, I've started the list of the policies that either we, they're not clear, or we need to create, or whatever. If we start breaking that down, you know, having the sort of two-step approval, discussion approval process um throughout the year, that we can start getting through some.
So, I mean, two things, I'm a big fan, I used to be staff to a board, so I'm a big fan of throwing stuff at staff. And and, you know, making like, so a task for Denise would be come up with a list of policies that need to be revamped. That doesn't mean we just accept it.
Right, right.
Or reject it, but it's something we can talk about.
Right.
You know, as opposed to us sitting here trying to tick off policies from our members.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Uh maybe six years ago or seven years ago, I tried, I think it was the first year I was chair, I tried to restructure the meetings to have an hour and a half on, you know, like big thoughts. Policy and stuff like that, and I tried it at the beginning of the meeting, and then I tried it at the end of the meeting, and it didn't work either way. At the beginning of the meeting, it kinda worked, people were kinda casual, but then the seats started filling up. And you start feeling that subtle pressure of people are waiting for us to get done. And at the end of the meeting, people are tired, grumpy, and why are you home? And I I think they mentioned at that civility conference, every once in a while, maybe you just need a special meeting.
Right, right, and maybe we do that, like quarterly or something, and we just say, let's, that's what we'll do, you know, it's. I mean, the other option is, do we meet every two weeks instead of twice a month, you know, do you fit it in that way? But I think just saying, you know, that we'll see how this one goes.
I I think organically, things are gonna come up that are gonna call for a special meeting. I do think that like, um, I mean, I I'm happy to meet whenever we need to meet, um cuz I do think that um it's important. But um, yeah.
So so, okay, so we, I think we have a a agreement on the general goals for the session, so so in terms of specifics, that's, you know. My question for you guys was like, give me your top three, like, do we have, cuz I wanted to hear like how we can plan this time better. You know, that we make a good use of the two hours that we do, or whatever. So um I was gonna try to do something like a whiteboard, but I think. So um I was gonna try to do something like a whiteboard, but I think that I'm just gonna use the old-fashioned paper and write it down. Anybody wanna start on what what your your, you already said your top for three were all the same thing? T A work plan, right?
Well, you know, I think on specifics, um I'd have to go back and find my January email, uh but I know I wanted to talk about transportation. Maybe that is no longer in my top three. I do wanna talk about Lower Village, um in part as a lightning rod. Residents think we have more power over what goes into Lower Village than we do. Um and I think we have to, we have to exercise whatever power we do have, we have to coordinate with the planning board, and it's perfect for the town administrator to to take on. H R was one of my topics, but we we're gonna hire somebody who's gonna take that on, and I'm just gonna leave it, I think, at that for now.
Okay.
Can I jump on what Jim just said?
Sure.
Um so, Lower Village, of course, was one of mine as well. Um I think with a lot of federal money that is starting to come available, I would like to be able to see how we can access um infrastructure funds. I think there's always been sort of a roadblock and um for certain types of infrastructure in Lower Village, and so I would really like us to be able to finally do some work um along with the planning board. To really flush out a lot of, a lot of it, um because I will, I just, I don't wanna, I see what the work that our state senators are doing for other constituencies and um in infrastructure, and I don't want us to get lost. And so I think I, that's very big picture, but that's sort of my. Oh, my second one was about the appointment process as well.
Appointment.
Um and we do need to have a metric, even if it's a form, a very basic form, like, are you, have you shown up to meetings, have you done whatever, you know, uh very basic, I'm not looking for anything, but um like, Zach, I think Zach was saying, like, how can you, like, how can we vote on this stuff? Um if we don't have more information. All right, that's it.
Okay. Megan?
Uh my burning desire is to get clarity on um huge capital spending that is coming at us. Um specifically around potentially, you know, just around the bonding conversation. More education for everybody around bonding C B A funds. And really, you know, bigger picture, looking at our priorities, and so I don't know whether that's a place the board wants to take a stand, or whether we just wanna really look at the mechanics and how to guide other boards and committees to sort through the process, but I think it's a really big conversation um before, you know, one excellent presenter steals the show, and, you know, I mean, which isn't which isn't wrong in one sense, but we just, I think that we need to consider, you know, the different areas that we that we could spend money and that are outside of our regular budget or our school budget.
Right. They're certainly not coming up.
Yes.
Yeah.
I had sort of two themes that I was hitting on, and certain ideas that fell into the two. The first is, you know, I'd like to see us, and then we talked a lot about it, when we were doing the appointment process, I think that sort of idea comes under this for me, uh as well, which is how we reclaim our our strategic decision-making ability as a board, and how we use our expertise in town to help us do that. In particular, two areas that I am interested in, climate change and energy. I think we have to start to create the good, proper climate plan in our town to understand and provide the ability to critically think as a board, when we go to make purchases, how are we doing that? Using our expertise in town, I mean, we are, we are the green town, like, we have the experts that could come and sit in this room and guide us to amazing decisions and cost-effective decisions, and I think, you know, that's one of the things that I I took away from town meeting was the gentleman that kept standing up and saying, but what are the options? I heard him, I heard him, it was very loud, and I heard it, and although it happens in these meetings and necessarily on the town meeting floor, I think that's what I'd like to do, is present that that climate and energy, and really thinking about that, and and our visitor gentleman who was on from Hudson Light and Power, who was the appointee, like, I I heard this conversation, I'm like, I wanna have more of this, and I wanna see you strategically talk about that. And the second from for me is uh police reform and accreditation. It's obviously something that I want our town to lead on, I think we have the right people in town to lead on it. I think these are are two very important topics, it's defined. And in particular, what I'm, wanna say very clearly is, I think that we should try to choose a topic that we can try this out in, see how it works, build our process, uh and I'm completely open-minded, as long as for me that a subcommittee has a specific purpose and a tangible outcome. I I don't want a subcommittee that's just floating in the air, I want it to say, we need you to come in, and on climate change and energy, we're looking for evaluating all capital projects and helping us understand how to make them green and what that cost is going to be. Like, that's what we want you as our experts to do, and help it, then come to our board and present it, so that way the town can see that we're we're actually meeting our our climate obligations. So that was one of them, the other side I really wanna see is us thinking about how we're going to lead as a board through our voice. You know, I brought it up last meeting, it it's really important for me to think about how we hit that transparency and what our voice looks like. You know, I'm thinking rules of the chair and setting the agenda, just making sure that it's clear for folks. Proclamation, public statement policy, what does that look like, how are we going to lead, right? A bike safety awareness month would be amazing, because I know, Jim, there are huge issues in town, and I watch it every day, cuz I live on one seventeen. It's not okay, uh but also where we can lead on on social justice issues, and and Pride Month, and and all these others, and I I think that's really important for us to start to talk about as a board, and how we wanna do that, and and making sure we keep in mind that we represent everyone in Stowe, so like, I want our agendas to represent that, I wanna hear from every board member, agenda items. We may disagree on the outcome of those, but I wanna hear, because that's how I know the pulse of the town. Uh and the third one is review of our town website, which I consider to be about the public side of things, and that may be a longer-term, you know, project of just getting the pulse of like what information is out there, how do we wanna communicate it, and what does that look like? And again, we have communication experts in town, like, let's start talking about what this looks like, let's use our P R firm, let's use Denise's ability to do this, that, sort of is the two themes that I'm that I'm working in, uh and and thinking about this strategic, you know, planning meeting, and knowing that if it's only two hours, you know, we're not gonna accomplish all of this, but it's sort of like where my mind is going, and where I'd like to see us move as a board i- is accomplishing sort of these two uh different themes, uh and frankly, figuring it out as we go along, and hopefully finding a process that we think works and recreating it.
Can I comment on one quickly?
Yeah.
Um so just so you know, the climate change and energy is on your July twenty-seventh agenda, we're putting forward a committee and a purpose and a climate action plan.
Awesome.
Okay.
How do you cross that off your list?
I'd like to say that I'm looking forward to all three of these strategic planning uh meetings that we're gonna have. At least, yeah, yeah.
No, you you gotta keep it, the the key is just listed, the same Denise, go do something.
See, I already crossed that off.
I wanna, I wanna make a a comment about um about uh this process of staff presenting things to us, and I mean, it may be an obvious comment to everybody in in their experience as well, but um when I did some graphic design for a while, I found that as soon as I dummed in some text into an area that I wanted, that the customer had not given me content for, I immediately got a conversation from them, because they said, oh no, this isn't right, I wanted to say, I I don't want it to say this. I wanted to, well, what do you want it to say? And and so, by getting um perhaps a draft policy on something, or, you know, just pulling up something that we know we wanna review, it's gonna generate conversations very quickly.
Amen, good.
Yeah, mhm.
Right.
I, can I just add, I haven't said mine, so I'll just throw out my, I I went in a totally different direction, but I, I mean, not totally, I guess, cuz um it was mostly around Denise's goals, but I think the interfacing with committees, which sort of goes to the sort of, I mean, a couple of the things that I said, you know, about reclaiming our our role in strategic decision-making is just, I think the we really need to redefine how we communicate with the different committees, it's partly because, you know, we don't, we haven't been clear on what our direction is, and so everybody's going in different directions, and I think I'm not sure what the steps are, but I just wanna have more of a conversation on on where, how we can change that over the year. And then um the master plan.
Oh, yes.
We need to like, get it going again, oh, she raises her hand now. Yes.
I was involved in politics a long time ago, and she all knows.
Can you, if, actually, uh not everybody, I don't know if everybody knows who you are.
Oh.
Do you, does everybody know?
I mean, I know, but.
Okay.
I suspect people might, I don't know, I know a little bit.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I just, I didn't wanna be so.
Folks who are watching, oh, oh.
That's right.
Anyway, Kia Fisher, I was on the original Charter Commission back in nineteen ninety-one, when everything was totally disarray, and we had to run for it. And we had more applicants running for the committee, I'm sorry, for the board, than there were positions. So I was lucky, because I was in the first half of the alphabet. Uh so I made it on, and we were actually on T V with the first live broadcast for interviews. It was really important, and there's so much that you guys aren't seeing. Um I work with people every day that are hurting for money. They're embarrassed, they've lived in town a very long time, they don't wanna come forward, um and they very much feel like they've been run over. After Charter, I went on Finance Committee, and one of the big, big things we did was have meetings on different nights of the week. And we had, I think it was quarterly, joint board meetings. So planning board minutes don't resemble what they talk about. Good example. And they should, so public meetings are important, so for, then on the same night, you can't go. So you can't go see what planning board's doing right now.
Right, right.
We were very actively involved. So, one of my thoughts is to try and adjust when the meetings are, and the capital planning, I'm sorry, the um
Charter.
Nah. We're trying to figure where we're going in direction, actually, I'll give you this, this is back in nineteen ninety-six. Warren article, the planning board actually gave their names, numbers, Ingebor Clark bought one of my houses back right before then, and I was very worried that she was gonna change town government, cuz she came from the city. She was wonderful, all the way through, everything she's done, and she gave her a number to get input from the community.
Thank you.
Privately, so when you come to a meeting, you can actually have a conversation, or send an email, or get information directly. And I think that's really important, the community has a way to communicate with the board. That's all I really came to say.
Oh, thank you. And, you know, it's funny, cuz that came up, I think it was even in correspondence, but then I had someone ask me about why don't we have all of our emails posted? You know, what's that?
Even if you don't read them, you feel like you can reach out to somebody.
We do, we have our town emails, so no town emails are posted, but if you click the link, it will email any of you.
But people don't know that.
Well, and.
People have found me.
Yeah.
Nope, yeah, but that's.
You're formidable.
I think that is a different step, actually, cuz some people need to see the email, they don't, they don't wanna fill out a form.
And they don't know how to use things that are technology-related, they've lived in town a long time. Uh it's an exception. So that I wanted to make a point, there are a lot of people that are not, um they're afraid to come forward.
Yeah.
And you would have a lot more volunteers if they had access.
Yeah.
And a description of what the role of that.
That has been on Denise's.
Very big, oh, she's been incredible, I have to say, she actually read the Charter. So impressed.
Yeah. So so, I mean, anyway, so I think um that's actually, I'm gonna, I'm adding that, just the sort of access issues, but I think the master plan and and um that was the other.
The joint boards and actually meeting on different nights, cuz oftentimes you overlap and things, and originally it was switched to Tuesday nights for convenience of the town administrator, enough the current one
Yeah.
and Jesse, cuz they had an hour ride. And I think it should be to benefit the citizens, not the employees.
Yeah, it's hard to know, I mean, that's why I've been, I've loved this at least, cuz it gives a lot more people access to to attend the meetings, you know, they don't have to commit to you know, getting here or, and then they can watch it, I mean, that's, Stowe T V is a lot different than it was.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um yes, Zach, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just respond and say, I I agree with everything you just said. Scheduling and and this board reclaiming its chief executive status and its convener of boards needs to happen. And it it's one of the most important things that I think this board can help do, because the only way we can, we get to a strategic town plan is for all of our boards to be on the same page, and that to me is this board's mission, it's in our charter, it's our charter's mission, it's what we're supposed to do. There's specific provision in our charter that actually says we can call every board, including elected boards in front of us if need be. I think we have to start to do that. It was part of what we talked about with the liaison role last time, and I think we're extending now, and and so I completely agree. I'm and I'm all about transparency as well, and I'm comfortable for my email to be out there, like, it is the town's email, and like, they write it, like, that is what
Right.
I want to hear from everyone, and I know that every member here, I think, feels the same way of wanting to hear from folks, and so however we can make that easier, to me, is absolutely critical, because that's the only way we know what's going on with our residents in town, and for having them raise issues, and it may be the same squeaky wheel, but that's fine to me, because that's that's the point of of what we're doing, so.
Can I say one other thing, since I, you know, my mom?
You've got the room.
I I did ask planning board for a list of the housing developments that are approved currently, ones that are in the works. And I know just based, cuz I saw houses, and I used to have a list that I could monitor that came on, that was posted, what was approved, or what was proposed. My gut is, is about five hundred homes, apartments, or whatever, that are due to hit in the next two years in the approval process. That would have a tremendous impact, horrible, on the schools. I was on five space committees for schools. And I just wanted to make sure that people are actually communicating between the departments, right, cuz I feel like that is just following.
Well, I think that gets a little bit what Courtney is saying about priorities, like, we need to be thinking about, you know.
I know, yeah, I know. Yeah.
What what are the priorities that are, people are working on, and what are the priorities we should be thinking about?
That's the master plan, that's why that's so critical, and it's been dropped for a little bit, really.
That's master plan, right.
So if I could just, a word of caution.
Yep.
I think there are limits on what we're talking about now, not not so much the public participation transparency aspect of it, but on the, this board is the chief executive officer aspect of it. It's true, we can set priorities, uh that power to call boards in when we see fit, I don't think we've used that enough. That's one reason I don't particularly want any liaison for the C P C. I think we have superiority, we don't, not summon them in, but invite them in. Cuz I think on this board, we have disparate opinions on what they should be doing, so. But we just heard one example of someplace where our executive function has no role, and it's in permitting. It would be completely inappropriate for this board to insert itself, even theoretically, into the permitting process. We have no role in semi-adjudicatory proceedings pending for other independent boards. We have to respect that. Even that line has been crossed, not by boards, but recently by some town employees. We have to respect that. So I I hear what everyone's saying about this, but there will be some practical and legal limits to it.
But I didn't, I didn't hear what Katie, to me, what I heard was like, we should be aware of, you know, what's coming down the pike. It's, you know, not that we have any role in it, but, cuz we need to have that in our planning, if if if, you know, like, even when um the one off of uh Hudson Road
Athens Lane.
started exploding, all of a sudden, it was like, it went from these little parcels of land, just now they're doing, they put three hundred.
So, and that, and that was, I I think I've mentioned before,
I mean, that was, right.
That was the genesis of the whole liaison role, is that Steve Dungian pointed out, we don't always know what the planning board is doing, and we always wind up getting asked questions about it on town meeting floor.
Right.
Um yes, absolutely, we should, we should definitely know, but it's sometimes a thin line between knowing about it and trying to assert yourself.
And trying, okay. Well, and and quite frankly, there's not a lot that we can do if the zoning speaks to whatever the zoning speaks to.
Right.
We can certainly, and as the planning board has been doing, is updating our zoning and updating and doing all of that stuff, but
Right.
there are some situations where your hands are tied legally, like you, we we just, but I do understand.
Communication.
Absolutely, I absolutely agree, I just um to Jim's point, like, we we absolutely cannot step in that, that that is not our role. But knowing about it absolutely is, because, as you were saying, it does it it affects everything, it it, housing affects everything in the town, so.
Yep. Yep.
I completely agree with you. And I I think of the chief executive role as being a chief convener, and that means coming together. I think doing it in open meeting format means that we have a good check and balance on that, of recognizing we're not talking about a specific action in front of the planning board, but rather, in our agenda, we have the ability to focus on a topic that we think is really important for us to further capital, you know, projects, further capital understanding, so I I definitely appreciate your your caution there, and I completely agree, and I think that's where we can rely on on the agenda-making process to ensure that we are where we should be, really working together, finding, you know, my my biggest worry is always that the select board and the planning board meet at this, um at the same time. I just find that to be unacceptable as a town, because it puts residents in the position of needing to choose what board they're going to go to, and both boards make impact in the town, and if you're interested in the way that Stowe's going to be shaped, you need to go to both. Uh and so, i- it is one of those things where I think we have
Uh, and so it, it is one of those things where I think we have to start to discuss this just openly and very, in a friendly, you know, candid, uh, collaborative way on how we're going to just make sure our town is moving in a direction that we all are, are working towards. And, and I generally think that we're all on those same pages. There may be some tensions, maybe things where we disagree on, but I think that is one of the key things I'm hearing from, you know, across all boards, and I, and I think it's really exciting. And so I'd like us to take that, you know, bull by the horns and, and run with that.
On the planning, I mean, so the, the agenda planning for this is gonna be a little challenging. I think that I will, um, work with a draft with Denise and then we'll figure out how we can distribute it. I mean, we don't have another meeting before then to, to agree on it, so I'm, I'm a little stunned.
How, how general can we be?
Well, I, I mean, there's, yeah, I mean, I guess that's, we could probably come up with, say, you know, I'm thinking sort of like four buckets and then, and try to, and then at the beginning, you know, we'll figure out what, how we're gonna spend those four buckets or something. So I'll, you know, I'll, I'm gonna leave a lot to Denise to help me like sort through this and see how we can come up with something. I did suggest we might like order pizza beforehand just because, you know, or something, some sort of meal to actually have a dinner before. We will be meeting downstairs, 'cause this room will probably be getting used by boards who can use, take advantage of the technology, so that's why we're gonna be downstairs. So it will be opposed to public meeting, people can come and listen. Any other final thoughts before we move on? Okay, uh, Town Administrator's report.
Um, I will acknowledge that there is an issue in town this week from Waste Management and the private trash pickup. The Board of Health is working on it. They are limited in their capacity because they're limited to issuing a permit to the trash haulers and their trash regulations would require a thirty day notice if they planned to rescind or cancel a permit. But our district sanitarian within the show, but associated Boards of Health has spoken with Waste Management several times. They have a major staffing issue and lack of drivers. They are trying to get more people on board. They have asked for twenty-four hours to try and, I guess they were out today, they're coming out tomorrow to try and get things under control. The Board of Health was contemplating an emergency meeting to discuss this, but again, Waste Management has asked, you know, for another day to see if they can make some progress. There is information on our website, um, under News and Notices, and by now it should be on Facebook and Twitter. If you click on the link that says missed service, you can put in your address and it will tell you when you are scheduled to be picked up. There are some issues with calling Waste Management. If Waste Management does not have your phone number in their system, um, you will not get the automate, automated callback to tell you when you're scheduled. So people are missing that callback. But it is being worked on and the Board of Health is doing whatever they can in their capacity to try and address this, so. We understand this frustration. I will tell you, there are six other trash haulers available. The list is on our website, we've put a link to it as well. Feel free, folks can call around. Um, I've been told by a number of residents they've gotten much lower rates. So, you know, certainly, you're not, no one is required to use one of the, or one particular, you have seven options. So if folks are unhappy, certainly they can shop around. Ellen already mentioned that the buildings will reopen on July sixth, so we are actively moving towards that. The library is planning something, I think, for that day, some small event. I met with the Council on Aging today to talk about their reopening process. I will ask that folks and regular patrons of the COA be patient. They are not ready to start programming right away. They are going to ease into it and try and get a feel for what they feel they can safely do down there. There is still some concern, as there is in this building and all the buildings, um, of public coming in. You know, we will ask folks to wear a mask if they're not vaccinated, but, um, you know, we've decided collectively that there's really no one to police that, so it's not fair to the offices at the doors to have to deal with that, so. But we do ask folks to be patient and try and follow the, um, our protocols as much as possible. The new coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds have come out. I applied for federal grant funds that currently the town of Stowe is earmarked about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That may go up as part of the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. There may be an additional round of funding because other parts of the country get county funds. And for Massachusetts, they're then reallocating those county funds. We have some flexibility with the funding, um, but they have very strict federal guidelines and this would fall under the federal grant requirements. So it may require us to have a separate, um, federal audit, uh, but these funds can then pay for that. These funds can pay for someone to come in and actually oversee and make sure that we are spending and documenting the grant funds correctly. I'm still working that through. Every week, a new advisory comes out about what we can do with the funds, how we need to spend the funds. I will say, the state has said to us, we need to spend the money. Even with the first round, the CARES Act, we have spent everything we've got to date. Now we're seeking reimbursement for some expenditures. But the federal government's stance is, if we don't spend it, they're gonna give it to another city or town or another state. And so the state feels that if we get into a situation that we can't find creative ways to spend it, then they will help us find some projects, some infrastructure. Um, they're focusing on water and sewer. Um, there are some other things that they're focusing on. So it covers coronavirus relief as well as infrastructure, so. Details about that will be forthcoming. I plan to put together sort of an internal task force to look at what it covers and come up with some ideas that we can then move forward with.
Are you finding the MMA, no, MMA, um, information helpful? You seem like they come up with a lot of updates as well.
I do, I mean, they all come up. It's more the DOR. MMA will put something out after the DOR, put something out. But there's, you know, every week there's another webinar. And it's, you know, it's, now that it's a federal grant, it's, it's just so much more detailed and what you can do and cannot do. And even the accounting is different than the other funding and, um, it's just more of a, it's more of a comprehension of, you know, how these funds are to be used. And there's so many different criterias and some we fall into and some we don't, and, so it's just, it's just a matter of figuring out sort of what direction we can take and then, you know, talk to this board. If there's certain projects that we can then say, well, let's use it for this, or, um, you know, come up with some type of list of how we wanna spend these funds. Obviously, if there's coronavirus stuff that we still need to filter through, we can do that. But, um, a large part of this will be used for sort of the recovery aspect. We did receive funding for, um, the Lake Boone Dam, um, for design funds. So the state, um, I actually don't know if it's been formally announced, but, um, the state has granted us funding for the design, design study for that, which will then open us up for, for funding for the actual project construction. So that was great news, we're working on that. Um, Steve's been doing that. We sent back some, assigned the grant form last week or the week before, so, um, that's moving forward. Haven't really heard on some other grant opportunities that are still pending out there. There's still one in the, in the works with, um, Representative Trey Hand's office on Track Road. That hasn't, haven't heard anything more on that. Uh, but there are still grant opportunities, it's been a ton of things that we've been applying for, so. Um, hopefully that will continue to work out in our favor.
So who's writing all the grants?
Different departments depending on what it is. Yep, um, folks here are really good at finding grants, um, applying for them, um, learning from mistakes if we've applied a previous time. Some of them we just qualify by nature because of the situation we're in. Lake Boone, we sort of relied heavily upon the fact that, you know, we would absorb the whole cost, but so many other towns benefit from it if the, if the dam goes, the access to Hudson and so on. So we try to, um, you know, wind a little bit that we have to foot the bill and everyone else benefits from it. So things like that, that they can clearly see that there's a benefit and need for. So we'll continue to do that. We still have a number of positions, um, open. We've started interviewing for the departmental assistant position that will be shared between Planning and Board of Health. We actually have interviews tomorrow for the building commissioner position. Next will be the assistant TA and the fire chief process to get going, so all those are moving forward. So hopefully in the next couple of meetings, we'll start making some recommendations, so that would be great. With the number of retirements coming down. And let me see, I think that was everything I had for you. Yes, that is my list for you tonight.
Any, any questions?
Thank you, that's a big list.
Um, okay, uh, meeting minutes. We have, um, June eighth. Look at, they're both for, for last, for this month. Oh, my goodness. Sorry, I just couldn't help you. Any, um, edits, comments, changes to the June eighth minutes?
I have a comment on the, um, section on the conservation restriction.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
This is in the open session?
Yes.
Is, sorry, this is open session, right?
Yeah. The first, uh, full paragraph says Nancy Shepherd is offering six point five acres of her land to the Stowe Conservation Trust. I think that should be more carefully worded, offering a restriction, um, offering, uh, restriction of the building rights.
Right. Mm-hmm, right.
Something, um, to clarify that she's not actually getting the land to them.
That's right, right, right.
Just the conservation.
Good catch, pretty specific. Great.
That's all I have.
All right, that's great. Anybody else? Okay, well then I will take a motion to approve the, uh, June eighth minutes, open session, as amended. Someone? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have, um, the executive session minutes. Oh, yeah, I guess, no.
No, so there's really nothing in here that I would say is.
You said we were gonna release them anyway, so.
Needs to maintain confidential.
There you go.
If you all feel differently, that's fine, but, um, I, I felt like we've discussed this, we discussed it at town meeting, uh, for that matter, so.
Right.
I would be comfortable if you release them, but.
Well, question on that, I, I think I am too, but they didn't actually file a lawsuit, did they? 'Cause if they did, I would, I would, I would wanna get rid of that first, okay.
No. They did not. They did not.
And I, I can see releasing it.
Yeah, great. So any other, um, edits, changes to the minutes? And I'll take a motion, um, to accept and release.
Motion, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes of June eighth and to release Sam.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Right. And that being said, um, correspondence, does anybody have any comments on anything they wanted to raise?
Uh, I felt like, um, there were two or three letters which highlight our, uh, need to discuss um, how the board would like to approach, um, some of these topics, sort of, um, I think this is one of the things that, that Zach said, um, fairly eloquently earlier. Um, but how we communicate with, with town, how we, um, and the, um, I'm just gonna say, I, I think it's, it may be complex for us to endorse everything that we're asked to endorse or, or, um, proclaim. And so that's the conversation is how do we, um, say what we need to say? And, um, you, you know, is there any way that we can, uh, make an umbrella that says that, you know, or not? So, um, that's my comment. Leads our attention.
Um, I think as a policymaking board, I think anytime that we, or not anytime, but I do think that it's important that if we are to make a proclamation, that we have some policy to back it up as well. And so, and I think we can do that. I, I absolutely do. I think, um, we've been doing that, um, with a lot of our policing policies, I think. It wouldn't be, with Pride in particular, 'cause that was what a lot of our letters are about. I do think we have the policies that we've been moving forward with the policing. To say that this is something that we are, um, that is important to us, because we've been making the policy to go behind that, or we've been, I'm not being very eloquent right now. I'm the opposite of Zach, but I'm just saying that I think that what is important to me is not necessarily that we endorse everything that is put forth in front of us, but if we have policy that we're working on that, that is in lockstep with it, then why wouldn't we say we'd like to proclaim June as, or we'd like to recognize that, that June is Pride Month, or we'd like to whatever else. That, that our values as a town, we're pushing forward this policy. So obviously, it's in line with being able to make that bigger public statement, so. Yeah, so that's sort of where I land on that. It's like, I'm, I'm okay with us saying, you know, June is Pride Month and, and we're making a proclamation against it, but whatever.
So. We're getting a little far off, correspondence, this is an agenda, I don't think it's gonna be on the Planning Board's sound and planning question, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Well, that's. Saying.
Oh, okay.
I was saying, I endorse it as an agenda, and this brings it back up.
Yeah, right, perfect, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, it was just that there were so many letters about it. I wanted to make sure that I said something.
And just in correspondence.
Yep.
I thought that the letters, and this goes to, to your part, uh, point, uh, they were very eloquent. These folks took some time to sit down and to hear our meeting and to like actually write something up and engaged with our meeting, that's, that's incredible. And I want that to happen on every one of our topics, not just a proclamation, but I'd like for it, most importantly, to happen on some of the other policies that we're gonna be making that are likely to be very significant policies in town. And, and I'd just like to encourage it. I'd like to encourage folks to continue to write in. I love reading these letters, it gives me ideas, it keeps me thinking. You know, when you get independent views and, um, you know, obviously these ones, you know, endorsed a view that I had, but it, it wasn't, it was just the way that they were written that just really stood out to me, that, that they really thought it through and, and made me think about my own positions and, and challenge them, and, and I, and I like that. Uh, so I would just like to say thank you for sending them in, and I hope we hear from them more often, uh, about all of our different policy decisions.
So since we're all staying our position, I don't wanna be left out. I agreed with the chair's decision not to put on the agenda, I mean, not that it was up to me, I do believe ultimately is the chair's job to do that, but, um, not to put on the agenda an ad hoc, uh, proclamation for that particular month. However, I do think it is, as the letters show, it's more than timely to have the discussion about a policy around these things. What the letters showed to me more than anything else was that people feel very strongly about it. I probably have a slightly different perspective on it than many of you, but I think it is, I think we need to address the subject as a whole.
Thank you. Okay, if there is no other business, I will take a motion.
Motion of a adjournment.
All in favor?
Aye.